Everyone else is here. I would like to remind everybody that we are live on the web feed and we are being video voice recorded. So, and also if you have anything that makes noise, could you please silence it or turn it off so it doesn't interrupt the meeting? I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Grabens, seconded by trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on our agenda tonight? Seeing none? Just a minute. Has everyone signed in? And you know what? I actually haven't started. Oh, they did. You thanks, you guys, you're wonderful, because I didn't start it. Okay, we are live now. Voting control. Okay, so all those in favor? Had to remember how to do it. The item isn't on the screen. Chris, it's not showing on our screen.
They changed the input there, I think.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. So, are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none? We have no delegations. We have no presentations. So, nothing to acknowledge. Okay, so we're up to the minutes of the September 2nd board meeting. Do I have a mover? Moved by trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee L. Harrison. Is there any discussion on the minutes from September 2nd? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So, we're now? Yeah. We're up to business transacted in private session, and I believe there's an item?
We have one item this evening. Be it resolved at the Halton District School Board, approve the audit plan attached to report 15112, Appendix C, for the fiscal year ended August 31, 2015, prepared by the Board's external auditors, Deloitte LP and ISO move.
Seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Just a minute, I have to find the topic. It's not in here. Just a minute, you have to wait a minute. Technology is wonderful.
Yes, it is. Just keep saying it.
Found it. Okay, so that was moved by vice chair Colard, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other items tonight? Thank you. We are now up to our order paper. Are there any questions on our order paper tonight? Seeing none? Oh, just a minute. Trustee Harvey Hope. Oh, I pushed the button, but it wasn't showing yet. On the order paper, there are a couple that I think need to wait just till the next meeting. Motion 140039 about the community funding facility enhancements. Later on, it talks about the fact that it's coming next week, but it isn't here yet, so it probably shouldn't be shaded for another week. 140039, when you get to the board reports, it talks about how it's coming next week. Then the trustee code of conduct, I think that one needs to stay there since it hasn't come back out of PBNG yet either. We usually leave them on until they come back. And then, the other one is 150121, to prepare the design guidelines. Until we also see them back, we'd like that one left. I would like that one left on, just so we know to go look for it. Is there anything else? Any other items on the order paper tonight? Seeing none? We are now up to action items, and we have no action items tonight. We're moving right along. So, we're up to one of our highlights, our student trustee report. Trustee Schneider.
Okay, so Jovan and I have set the dates for our board meeting, and I actually finished a student trustee website, which is hdsbstudent senate dot com. We're currently bringing down the old ones, so you can go to that one, and it has all the dates. There's an FAQ on what student senate is, and what happens, and all of that. We're also changing the application selection process a bit. So, in addition to sending out to all the principals to send students, we also have an online application. So, those who do not, so grade nines who may not know their principal, or students who want to come on a different reason, to represent a different issue other than being a student leader in their school, so maybe they have some sort of issue that they want to speak about, it gives them that opportunity as well. So, it keeps the application a little more open. So, we'll have both of those, and hopefully we can get our full attendance that we've been striving for from all schools, especially in the high school sector. And that's about it from the last meeting. We're working on getting the names of all the presidents of the student councils, or whatever councils in each high school, and we're going to try to bring them together in an online or in-person meeting to get all the student councils on the same page to make sure that student councils in schools are representing student voice as well as doing their other duties. So, kind of, so we've gotten some names, and we're continuing to get some, and that's about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, if you could send trustees the link to your website, which you said the dates are on the website, that would be great so that we all have it. And thank you very much for your report. It sounds like there's a lot of things going on, and we're looking forward to an exciting year. So, any other, anybody else have questions or comments for trustee Schneider? Seeing none? We are now up to notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Trustee Graves. Whoa, no.
There was a question for student trustee, if I could still ask.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just wondering what the age of the intendees to student senate were for the elementary. So, just grade eights, or is it?
Sevens and eights.
Sevens and eights, thanks.
Because according to the Education Act, my mandate is over from grade sevens to
Thank you. Is this for the student trustee as well? Well, could you go, trustee Oliver, could you withdraw until we get to the next? Trustee Harvey Hope. I forgot, the camera follows the computer. My question is, how are the student senators selected at elementary level? If you're changing the application process in that a child can, a student can apply directly rather than necessarily being tapped on the shoulder by their principal, how's that working? And how many do they have from each school?
For elementaries, it's one per school, and we specified on the website and in the FAQ section that the principals, the selection of the principal takes precedence over an online application. So, online applications are only considered if the schools have not presently sent in. It's just a way to cover or bring the gaps of the schools that don't usually send any kids. Because I have a lot of emails from students throughout the year saying they want to join student senate, but their principal either didn't read the email, didn't talk to them, no teachers talked to them. When they talk to their teachers, they ignore them. So, this way, it's kind of more direct for that other, but it takes precedence when they're selected and sent.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that the website looks great, and I wondered, out of curiosity, what platform did you, or what tool did you use to build it?
Well, I designed it myself, but I used, like, I can hand code by myself, but I put it on this website called Squarespace so that it's easy, easier to change for the next generations of student trustees who may not have my coding experience.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Just wanted to check in on the process. Again, I listened to your description about how students can nominate themselves, or apply, or complete the paperwork, but I just, I'm keenly interested to know that the principals would be somewhere brought into the loop in terms of perhaps, I guess, giving their blessing or their support to the actual student who might have put their name in to the application process.
Okay, so, every year, there's, I have it actually here, letters are sent out to the principals explaining what student senate is, and then they select, they select students. So, elementary, it's one, secondary, it's two, depending on the numbers that year. So, it's up to the discussion of the school on how to select those students. My school, when I first applied to be in student senate, it was like, we wrote a rationale, like a paragraph, and they chose from there. So, that's how the principals send it. But initially, you could only go through your principal to be in senate, and then this way, it opens it up a bit, gives everybody an opportunity if that happens, yeah.
In the past, we've also asked principals to sign letters of permission as sales to a field trip, because these students aren't participating in an extracurricular, not on school site, so they would, they would be informed that the student was participating that way. We list all the dates of the student senate meeting.
So, if the online applicant, let's say a school sent no student senators, and there was an online applicant from the school, then we would contact that principal to let them know that they have a student, and then go through the field trip process, because it still is a school trip kind of thing, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments for our student trustee? Okay, so I think we're now safe to go to, there's a motion? To notices of motion. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. This notice of motion relates to Agenda 4.2.2, the Program Viability Committee, and the work and goals of that committee. Given the challenges faced by the HDSB in addressing program viability in dual-track schools, recognizing parents' guardians' interest in their children becoming bilingual, and recognizing that this is not unique to Halton region, I will be putting forward a motion for the Halton District School Board of Trustees to support a motion to go to the OPSA Central Work Group to ask to establish a provincial OPSA Program Viability Steering Committee, and request representation on that committee from the various divisions of the Ontario Ministry of Education, as well as members from the federal branch responsible for funding of French second language programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Trust, yes, so you will send that to Gail?
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Interesting, and I, not gonna jump in on my, the officer up for the board, but just to let you know the process, you're exactly right. It would be passed by this board, and then it would go to Central West, the Central West meeting, and then it would go to OPSA Exec and then OPSA Board of Directors. So, it's not going to be a quick thing, but then there is a process, but you started the process exactly right. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Daniele, and I will be looking forward to working with you and making sure we meet the timelines on the process needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other notices of motion tonight? Seeing none? We're up for our action items for October the 7th, and our first one is the Program Viability Committee. Associate Miller, report 15114 on page nine of your board package.
Evening trustees, and to our students at the back, welcome to teaching. We're okay? No? Hopefully, it'll work this time. What I'm going to put up there is the appendix with the actual consultation process. I have a couple of comments about, I have a couple of comments before, this is up for the benefit of the public, but my comments pertain to, first of all, the recommendations. The one, recommendation one is around the consultation process, and of course, you will discuss this this evening and so on. The second one, which may be somewhat, a bit of a surprise to a few, is the recommendation that implementation, if there are significant changes in the way we deliver French immersion, that implementation would begin in September 2017. I know when we first brought this to the board, there was probably a thought, or maybe even expectation, that September 2016 would be looking like the implementation date, but we believe that if we are to do a complete and fulsome consultation process, we will need more time, and there are activities within the board and agreements, collective agreements that mitigate against, I wouldn't say against a fulsome consultation, but would be a truncated consultation process. So, therefore, we're recommending, recommendation two. The second thing I'd like to emphasize is when we go to the public, there's two parts to this. The first is about providing information to the public with as much information as we can provide, and we're not asking for input on those information nights, but we hope to identify people who will participate in the focus groups, and then we develop the focus groups, et cetera. The second part is, of course, the feedback, where we ask, we go out to the public and we get feedback, and as you'll see in the report, there's various means that we are going to receive that. And the final point I would make is, the way we are trying to frame this or characterize this is, I think around this table, we all know that we have issues around small class sizes in our English programs. We know that we have issues with our ability to recruit French immersion teachers, exacerbating the situation in the French immersion classes, but also making it difficult to offer viable English programs to some students in some schools, particularly our dual-track schools, where we have, in some cases, only six kids in a grade one English class. So, the way we are framing this and hopefully characterizing it for the public is, this is a problem, this is an issue, please help us solve this problem, how would you solve it? We're trying to, as much as possible, preclude the lobbying and the positions, as opposed to, this is the issue, even if you have a position, how would you solve this? How would you, as a member of the public, solve this problem? So, after those few comments, I'll leave it open for questions now. And as you can see up here, there is the, and this is for the public, I'll show the two slides, this is the consultation process we'd be using up here with the public, so.
Thank you, and there are a couple of people already on the list. First, trustee Harvey Hope. Sorry, I skipped you, so just. Oh, I thought Donna was ahead of me. Ah, okay. But, Chris, you'll have to, sorry, I somehow deleted her. Through you, Madam Chair, to associate directors, Miller. Thank you for this report. I really do appreciate the information and how you're going about it, and preempting all the questions we're going to get about when, and how, and what kinds of things you're going to do. So, I already am getting phone calls, I was out of the province, but answering calls about people had heard somewhere on the blacktop or something. Before we even had our report, people were worried that decisions were being made quickly, and I kept saying, no, the decision was to come talk to you, not the decision itself, I had a question about the focus groups. They, I noted the dates, there are Tuesdays and Thursdays consecutively in different municipalities, and maybe it's just because I was away, I was thinking that, and if anybody happened to be away that particular week, they'd missed both opportunities in their particular community, and I'm wondering whether or not there'd be a facility, perhaps, to throw another sort of all-encompassing, if you can't make it to one of yours, you could come to another one, kind of a thing, or an open one. Not, again, not sure how you're pulling people into the focus group versus, say, other open forums, but I do know that there are occasionally times where people just aren't available that week, or, and then again, sometimes some people say, well, I'm not available that day, so they're all Tuesdays and Thursdays, that's another potential, so maybe that extra one might be something other than Tuesday or Thursday, and I'll go back on the list for somewhere.
Through your chair, aim is to trustee Harvey Hope. Absolutely, we can, we can sort that. That's why we put the word proposed. I mean, these, we haven't set these in stone, because you never know what's going to happen at this point. Once we go out to the public, they will be, and we'll take that into consideration for
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, Ms. I love how this has been framed as a problem that we can work with our community to solve collectively. I think that's, that's great. I have a few questions. The first one is around our philosophy for consultation, and whether we are, I mean, there's a whole spectrum from providing information one way and collecting input back, and that's where it stops, over to, you know, a collaborative kind of discussion, so I just wonder kind of about our philosophy behind it. For me, I would love to flesh out a little bit more our target audiences and the tactics that match up with those audiences. For example, how are we going to hear the student voice piece in this? How can we give school councils the tools to consult with their communities? So, if I think about the health and phys ed, and the criticism that the province is getting about, you know, they sent a survey to school councils, to me, I think that's a really valid, a great learning that we can have here, and if we can enable the school councils to consult with their communities, I think that would be of great benefit to us. In addition to sharing statistics, I think the other side of quantitative is the qualitative piece in enabling people to tell and share their stories, so we can build up to some kind of, not perfect ever conclusion, but something that's more broadly supported. And then just one more point around methods of engagement. Facebook and Twitter, I find to be really linear tactics. There's a lot of other tools out there that I wonder whether we may look at things, like there's something called Mind Mixer, which is used by many municipalities around budgeting or visioning, and what it does, it allows people to post their ideas, kind of like Facebook, but there's voting functions and mapping functions, and all kinds of kind of neat, neat things that are out there. So, the bottom line for me is that I think it's really appropriate for us to take people on a journey on this one, from the problem that we share through collaboration to a solution, and I think if we can have meaningful conversation along the way, the end result will be a lot better. So, thank you.
You've used up your three minutes. Associate Miller?
Through your chair, aim is to trustee L. Harrison. Certainly, we're open to other forms of social media. I mean, we've put those in there because those seem to be the most popular ones, or the most used, as part of the answer. You, there's a lot of questions in your, your comments there. In terms of the philosophy, which is how you started, we've modeled this consultation process on our boundary review process. It's not exactly the same, but it's modeled on that, which, absolutely, there have been criticisms from some that they were not consulted enough, but by and large, and many trustees have been on those boundary review committees, we do garner valuable feedback and valuable information from the community, and sometimes we get thousands of emails from the community. One of the challenges with this will be, is the amount of information that we come in, that will come in, in terms of collating it and putting it all together, and determining how we use it. But our boundary review process has been successful in that we've had Q and As, we've had some consultations, we've had focus groups, I was involved in one in Southeast Oakville in Ward III, where we had several focus groups, provided all sorts of information, and although there were still concerns brought forward from the community, considering the number of people that participated in that consultation process, the criticisms around the process were not very significant. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying. We do have to meet our timelines as well, so I think we'd have to be careful about how we go forward, because it's an awful lot of people to consult with, it's an awful lot of communities to go into and get information back. The purpose of the focus groups, the purpose of the questionnaires, and the purpose of the social media and emails would so, would be so that we do hear those stories, so that we, we do hear what people are thinking about the scenarios, or scenarios that they've thought of themselves. We do want to hear that. What we're trying to do is limit comments about, and we get these, about the French immersion program. We're trying to determine how to deliver French immersion, not the curriculum of French immersion, which is set by the Ministry of Ed, so, or the Ontario Government, but, so I'd certainly take those points, and I'll take those back, and when we, the intent is, if this is approved or amended, to accommodate some of those requests, certainly social media one, the tools are relatively easy. We will go back to the committee. I've sent out a message to the PVC committee to sit down and say, look, what are some things that we really need to look on, how do we need to focus, focus on that? But, yeah, for sure, we're open to, this is not carved in stone yet, for sure.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair, to associate director Miller. In the consultation process, under data to be shared, I would like to ask that we also include data on transportation costs related to programming. In the consultation process, under data to be shared, I would like to ask that we also include data on transportation costs related to programming. Thank you.
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Oliver. We've actually tried to get some of that data. It's very difficult to get because all those kids are on the same buses. And the buses would be running anyway. There's, we have, we had an estimate, I, I wasn't prepared to bring it here because I'm not quite sure how it is, but certainly we'll try to get it. It, it is really difficult to do because many of the buses are shared. So, for example, one of our, even in our single truck French immersion schools, that could be a homeschool for a student, they're on the bus. If it became an English school, they're still on the bus, right? So it's, it's, but we'll certainly, it's, it's one of the pieces of data, but we'll do our best to get some number out there. My caution is, we don't want to put a wildly wrong number out there that people could jump on one way or the other, so.
Thank you, trustee Harvey Hope. Thank you. I have two things, I think I'll try to squeeze them both in. On, in the data to be shared, under numbers, excuse me, number of schools core French, probably should be number of schools who have core French, and also perhaps when they were implemented. So that, because we have different schools and different time implementations. I'm have, going to suggest a slight recommendation change to number one, just a wording change, which I have done on the, on the recommendation, page one. It, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board adopt the process as outlined in Report 15114, which is our standard wording of how we do these. So it's, you take out the following and add those words and take out the second process. And then in Recommendation Two, third sentence, with implementation in, I think is the right word, but in or for or by, but not of, September 2017. So I shared that in the Google Doc that Gail and Associate Director Miller have access to. So I would just think for next week that could be updated, just so that it, we're adopting the processes in the report rather than some other process. Thank you.
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. Yeah, I don't, that's not a problem.
A minute, can I keep going?
Manager or Director's Office, did you get that?
Put yourself back on the list, it took you off. Trustee Harvey Hope. Thank you. And then probably the most important point is, in the consultation process, one of the things that I think we need to figure out a way to ask is, what is the goal of the programs? So if, if we're having a challenge presenting the French immersion program and, or the English program, but that's sort of a given. The question is, what is the goal of presenting the program? Is there another way to get to that goal? It may be complicating the issue a little bit, but we've added core, primary core French in order to address the goal of learning French and getting proficient in French through another means other than French immersion delivery. So if there is a way somehow in the consultation and the questionnaire to figure out whether or not, you know, get, get that information and that feedback coming from parents. Is it that they want their children to be stamped officially bilingual, or do they actually want them to be, just actually know the language, which may come through a different way? And we may be running up against a hard wall against that because of the fact that the ministry has this, you know, stamp on your diploma if you've got this many hours in. But the question is, would the result of your child being fluent in French and being able to function in the world in French, is, would that goal, if one could deliver it in a different way, be sufficient? And I think we need to ask that question. Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I am, just wanted to build on what trustee Harvey Hope was talking about. And that is, if we could get some additional information around that core value that we're trying to build a program on. So firstly, by stating what, what we think it is or what we already know it to be in delivering that, the programs, i.e. strong and viable French and English programming or whatever it may be. And then through our consultation to test and get buy-in on that core value. Because then it helps us later on, I think strategically, to separate the conversation about, well, my, this is what works best for my family. And we can kind of back it off to a global kind of value piece. And I think one of the keys will be in the questions, the devils in the details, and the key will be the, the questions that we're asking around all of that, yeah.
Go ahead.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Al Harrison and trustee Harvey Hope. In the original report that I brought about Program Viability Committee, we talked about the three objectives of the committee. One of which was around providing viable program for both English and French programs. We called them objectives in that report. One might make an argument that they're also goals. So, yeah, I, I, I absolutely agree with you. I think to include that in our consultation process for, is for sure something we want to do. But I, I do think that they're already there through that original report. And absolutely, we would include those in the consultation process. I'm not, I, it's a difficult thing because a couple of comments around bilingualism. French immersion program, at no point do we say it will produce bilingual students. And we can't say that because we don't test for language proficiency at the end of their grade 12 year. So we'd be reluctant to talk about producing bilingual students. And, you know, I, I get the kind of wishy-washiness of that. But we're providing a French immersion program for students that hopefully that they, they embrace, they take, and then will lead them to be bilingual. But in of itself, we'd be reluctant to say that it will help students, it will make students bilingual on its own. So I just wanted to comment on that. But certainly, I agree with you around the goals, and I think it's important for the communities to know when we're asking for their feedback, here's what we're hoping to achieve as part of the whole couched around, here's our problem, here's what we want to get to, so.
Thank you, trustee Graves.
Just want to say thank you for the report. There's a lot in there that I think is great. The implementation date, I think, is reasonable. And when you think about the volume of work that we're going to have to do once even that decision is made, we're going to need a significant amount of time to do that. So that's great. And I really like that I can see in the report that there's a recognition that anyone who participates in this consultation, consultation process will have to become quite educated about what exactly the issues are. Because for us, sitting around the board table and the, and the people around us and the people in the system, it's very clear. But for a parent who might be at an, an English program only school, then, and a large one, and they might not see what, what these issues are, and they might not have a good understanding of what that issue is. So I think that the, the people who are involved in this consultation process, there's an education component to that. And I, I think you've captured it, it here, at least I see that it's, it's captured. And then my, my question is, would trustees have a role in the focus groups? I see the focus groups are quite large. So I was expecting kind of smaller focus groups and, and the trustees would stay away and wait, wait for the report. But is that something we should attend?
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Graves. In the past, trustees have not been included in the actual focus groups. They, they've gone to watch them, and they've, they've, but they haven't been active participants in them. But they go and observe and, and hear what the community has to say. And in fact, I would encourage trustees to do that as, as well. Being an active participant might put a trustee in a difficult position, though, I would think.
Thank you. Vice Chair Collard.
I just wanted to thank you for the, the pace at which you're taking this. You're, you're obviously moving forward at, I would think, the right pace to me, where you are taking each step thoughtfully and approaching this from a viability standpoint, not just for the program, but for the board in order to establish any changes that we choose to make as, as an entire board. There could be some very large ramifications and taking the time to ensure that it's done properly, I appreciate very much, and I thank you for this report.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair, to Associate Director Miller. I'm pleased that we've pushed it for implementation in 2017. And our internal process, it, it sounds reasonable, though appreciating the complexity of the issue, I still think it's a very tight timeline. And now, given my notice of motion, should my motion be successful at the provincial OPSA level? And should that result in some kind of a provincial steering committee with all the key stakeholders? I'd like to make sure that we can work with that so that we don't rush into something and then, you know, be in a position that we might have to reverse or alter what we've decided on.
We appreciate that comment, and trustees have to remember that the report by 2000, the timing of the report could be no action. And it could be no action because you're unable to reach a conclusion. Could be no action because there are some other factors that have come into play that, that will affect the future of either program, et cetera. So I, I think it's healthy to set a target. I hope we are able to have some decisions made by then, but there's always the possibility that something happens and we can't.
And I would just like to add, and I think that 2017 date does give us some, some, a buffer, some room. Because if that does result in some action at a provincial level, I think we've got some time to, before actual implementation, so for sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this topic tonight? Remembering it comes back in two weeks for action. Seeing none, thank you very much, Associate Director Miller, for your report tonight. I did it. And I think this is a topic near and dear to most trustees' hearts, and we look forward to coming back at the next board meeting. Thank you very much. So our next item is Active Transportation. Trustee Grabens, Report 15116 on page 14 of your board package. Trustee Grabens.
So as Chair of the Transportation Committee, this report is coming forward from the committee to recommend that we renew our commitment to active and sustainable transportation. When I spoke last week, we were speaking just about active transportation, but we did draw some conclusions that we need to include sustainable in, transportation in there as well. And we also really want to open, I, I think that we recognize that renewing this commitment isn't something we can do on our own. And we are, are definitely looking to, for partnerships out there to, to help getting, to help getting students walking, riding buses, skateboarding, however they're going to get to school and home. So the second recommendation addresses that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this topic tonight? Trustee, no, Oliver, yes.
I'm sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you, through your chair. I would just like to say that I'm fully supportive of this report and the recommendations in it, as this is a topic near and dear to my heart. Directly related to what I view as the concept of a neighborhood school. This is something that I started to work on personally as a co-chair in my school and continue to support within the framework of my super council within Ward Four schools. I had the pleasure of collaborating with trustee Grabens on the report, along with trustee Gray, and I'm glad to see it formally brought to the, to the board for action.
Thank you, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I just would like to say I fully support this initiative. I'm delighted that while it seems as a renewal, it's actually, has new components. And certainly, working outside of our community with other partners, our municipal partners, is, is something that the school boards and the communities need to do more. So I'm delighted that we're starting this together.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collard.
I also would like to echo the support around the table for this item. And I'm wondering, actually, if we might want to waive the rules to approve this motion tonight to give staff a little bit of extra time, because it's three weeks till our next meeting, that they would have that extra time in order in which to prepare the report, which is due back to us in December. And I was wondering if there might be any support for waiving the rules. If so, I assume.
Thank you. And I don't often speak to the waiving the rules, but I think that is a very good idea for many reasons to get us started. But also, our schools are starting without us. If we noticed the newspaper the other day, was it MM Robinson that, that is working with the city of Burlington on exactly this initiative? So we'd have to catch them on this.
Thank you. So I have heard a motion to waive the rules from Vice Chair Collard. Any secondary, trustee Oliver? Do we have any discussion on waiving the rules? Just a minute, I have to go to the voting. Trustee Oliver. Okay, so all those in favor of waiving the rules for our active and sustainable transportation motion? And that passes unanimously, so the, I will put the motion on the floor. I will. Trustee Gray, did you want to speak before I put the motion on the floor? You want me to do it again, Gail, or is it? Okay. You want to speak before the motion is read? Yes. So the recommendation is, the Transportation Committee recommends, number one, the Halton District School Board renew its commitment to active and sustainable transportation and develop a revised implementation plan, and report back with an interim plan no later than December 2015. And, two, the Halton District School Board explore, evaluate, and participate in opportunities for collaboration and collective action related to active and sustainable transportation with the Active and Sustainable School Transportation Hub, the local municipalities, the region of Halton, the Halton Catholic District School Board, the provincial government, and other potential stakeholders wherever possible. Moved by. Yes or no? Trustee Grabens, seconded by trustee Oliver. Okay, now we have speakers list. Trustee Gray.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, and just sort of confirm what Director Yawali has said about the excellent article that was in the paper about MM Robinson. And I wanted to say kudos to that school for launching this, but also serving as an example for all other schools to get and kickstart a campaign and to begin us on the journey as a board to ensure that all schools are also adopting this principle. And I think that the media attention to this is fabulous. It can, kudos again to our communications department for ensuring that the media were on site to cover this very, very special event. So I just wanted to add that and look forward to seeing other media support and. support and other schools jumping aboard this worthwhile campaign.
Thank you. Trustee Graves.
Thank you through you, Chair. Perhaps to Director Yawali, although you might divert it as needed. And it's more technical, I apologize. So for the part two, I was just wondering, my question is always, how does this come off the order paper? So it says that, you know, we're going to explore, evaluate, participate, and this bunch of groups, and that says wherever possible. So how do we know when we finish that item and it can come off the order paper?
Actually, I don't know. That is a difficulty because it sounds like forever. I don't know. We, this is, I think, two-way. One is that one, we would look for opportunities to collaborate, and the other one, we would welcome opportunities if the request for collaboration came our way. But you're right, it has that kind of forever feel. So in theory, it would never come off the order paper. The only way to take an item off the order paper and have it continue is to have it move from, from a motion to an administrative procedure or a policy.
I'm wondering if we put a date on here with, and say, and have it reviewed in one year or something? And then it would come up with the review? What do our trustees, so if we put evaluate and participate and then, and review one year after?
Do we want to say review or report back?
And report back in, what, December 2016? Or is that, is that, that would be fair? So Trustee Grabens and Trustee Oliver, are you willing to make an amendment to your motion and to have a report back for December 2016? Would somebody like to move an amendment? Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Graves. So just a minute. Just a minute, we have to have the amendment entered. So that, all those in favor of amending the motion that's on the floor? And that passes unanimously. Do we need to read the full motion again? Yes, please. So this is on the second part of the motion. I'm not going to read the first part again. The Halton District School Board explored, evaluate, and participate in opportunities for collaboration and collective action related to active and sustainable transportation with the Active and Sustainable School Transportation Hub, the local municipalities, the report of Halton, the Halton Catholic District School Board, the provincial government, and other potential stakeholders wherever possible, and to report back for December 2016. So is there any other discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none? All those in favor, just a minute, I gotta find the topic. Yep. All those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. So we are now up to for our information items. Oh, sorry, yes. Well, yeah, I didn't get the revised. I'd like to invite Superintendent Zonoffel up regarding the CAC motion.
Through the chair, good evening, everyone. For those of you new to the board, as you recall, back in January, we brought forward the names for the CAC representatives, both from the associations and members at large for this term. And so we have a great group of members for CAC. And will, as may happen, we'll see from time to time, but it's happened before, is that members of the various associations sometimes cannot continue in their term and therefore step away from CAC. And that allows associations to nominate other representatives to come forward. So Jim Dunn has been a member on CAC for quite a while and has stepped away as an alternate. And the nomination from the Halton Down Syndrome Association is Diana Bauer, who many of you are familiar with. And many of us speculated it was only a matter of time before Diana came back in some way, shape, or form. And you know that she has a wealth of knowledge around special education and certainly a big heart for that work. So she's the nomination for to take the place of alternate for Halton Down Syndrome. And so I bring this forward to you, this as, actually for your approval tonight, because you did need to approve the members back in January. And so any new membership you also need to approve. But we typically don't bring this for information, one meeting, and then for a vote the next, because it's fairly straightforward. So this is here for your approval tonight. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I hear that we should waive the rules. So do I have a motion to waive the rules? Moved by Trustee Reynolds, seconded by Vice Chair Collard. Just a minute. Is there any discussion, are those people on to any discussion about waiving the rules? No. Okay. So all those in favor of waiving the rules around the CAC motion? So that passes unanimously. Thank you. So I will put the motion on the floor. And are people okay to speak after that are on the list? Be resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the recommended appointment of Diana Bauer as an HTSB CAC alternate representative for the Halton Down Syndrome Association. Moved by Trustee Reynolds, seconded by Vice Chair Collard. Discussion? There is no discussion. All those people came on. Okay. Well, somebody came back. Trustee Harvey Hope. I think it's wonderful that former trustee Bauer is going to be a newly recreated CAC member. So I think it's a great idea. So I'm wholeheartedly in favor of it and glad she's donating her service to us again. Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. So you can be able to welcome Diana back to CAC. I wonder if she's at home watching. Hi, Diana. Okay, so our next topic is the school startup update under our information items. Report 15111, page 16 of your board package. Superintendent Blackwell, welcome back.
Thank you very much. Report 15111 is presented to trustees for your information. On my left is Tim Hall. Tim is a manager in human resources and he's responsible for our occasional teacher groups. So he spends a fair bit of his professional life working with Reg 274 and how to manage the expectations and parameters within that legislation. And he has been really vital in helping us get our placements done for opening day. This report is for trustees to understand those two key questions at the start of the report, which you may or may not have parents chatting with you about. One is, why would there be an occasional teacher in my child's class on the first day? And the second question we often get is, and therefore we have that, why can that teacher not remain for the year for the consistency? And we've explained the rationale there. We do get, it's amazing, the last-minute activity that goes on with our employees for a variety of reasons. And so that's what drives us and drives HR into trying to pick up the information from an employee returning from a leave, extending a leave, you know, illness-related, unfortunate surprises as we head towards September, secondments that come to Halton employees. So those last-minute situations, that is, that is the reason we simply run out of time to post for an LTO or a permanent staff member. And then, of course, we start, we start with those classes and because we have to follow a proper and ethical selection process and also be compliant to Reg 274, that teacher that's there the first day or the first week may not be the teacher for the rest of the year. So I just tonight wanted to share, and it's listed there, some of the things that we try to do to minimize the number of occasional teachers required in our classrooms. And you can see the themes, they're basically, we increased our rosters, we hired more teachers, short-term, long-term, occasional teachers. We increased our French, our French occasional teacher pool. We moved our dates back, we worked with our principal groups to say, let's meet even earlier in August so that we can get these placements done. And then we worked until the 11th hour on the Friday before the Labor Day weekend and were getting calls and assigning teachers and talking to principals and giving principals the go-ahead for a variety of hiring. So that's, that's, that's mostly around that first week and that first, the first day situations. I was very pleased, and on the second page, we, we show the numbers of classes that we have in secondary and elementary and the number of classes that we did require short-term occasional teacher for, for the first, for the first day. And so, and from my, my opinion is 25 classrooms out of 1966 is, it's, it's not the number we want. We love zero, but given the parameters we manage with, it, that number has consistently gone down over the last several years. What I would say about the remainder of the report, it shows you some of the go-forward work that human resources and principals will be involved in at elementary and secondary and that. So there's still some work to be done in both panels. And I won't speak to that this evening around numbers because the work has to be done. But on October 7th, we will be back here to share with trustees the staffing adjustments that occur because of these timelines. So that's, that gives you a snapshot of the first day work, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Welcome, Tim. We have comments and questions. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair, to Executive Officers Blackwell. Thank you very much for this report. I don't recall seeing one quite like this written before, although I know we've been given some of the information before. And I find it really, really, really helpful information to put your finger on and, and also to give parents and others who read it the sense of, it's not just your kid's class that this is happening to. You know, there's an awful lot more. I was actually kind of surprised by the, I think if I did my math correctly, the 173 elementary teachers who applied and like, there were more jobs than then applied. So that would mean that you actually still had openings. So like, when you read through it, it really explains some of the last-minute things and points out what it needs to. So I really do appreciate the content and I like that it's in writing. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Yawali.
Yes, thanks for the comments. The, the report is primarily a net result of various motions the boards have raised about the impact of 274. And you know, we've been taking steps over the last two years to minimize any negative impact they had. So my congratulations also goes to the Human Resources Department. They've done a lot of things very, very well with the cooperation of principals. And one of the main things that they did was to, to sequence the hiring so that the most desirable position being full-time and contract were filled first. Because the problem we were having is that as better jobs came up, our teachers who had been hired for the lesser jobs part-time would apply for the full-time jobs, creating a domino effect. So that's still going to happen because in October, we will release more dates and there will be full contract dates. So there's going to be a domino. But they've done their very best to reduce the number of disruptions for students. And I, and based on the, on the interest of trustees and whether it's by motion or not, it certainly was conveyed to me that was an issue for trustees.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through you, Chair, to the Executive Officer of Human Resources and also to Tim Hall. Welcome. I just wanted to ask one question, and maybe it's out of the purview of this particular document and report. When occasional teachers are being added to the roster in the Halton District School Board, are we looking at the geography of those teacher ads? And in particular, I'm thinking of an issue that has come forward to me from Halton Hills where sometimes not all jobs are covered. And I wondered if, is there a desegregation? Are we looking at the geography, the geography from where these candidates for the occasional list are hired from when we add to the pool?
Thank you for the question. Actually, we do look at our unfilled rates to see not only geographic area, but perhaps subject area, especially in secondary. And we do try to strategically recruit for, for those different needs that we do have. One of the high needs that Mr., our Executive Officer Blackwell noted was the French piece. That's why we did a little more recruiting in the French area. But we do look at those different areas to try and target hiring to make sure that we're minimizing the number of unfilled jobs within our groups.
Just as a follow-up, would, would a similar plan and process be in place for those individuals who are on the occasional list for EA's positions?
I believe so. I'm not the manager for that particular employee group, but I do think they also monitor. I think in all of our occasional pools, we try to strategically hire based on unfilled rates to try and make sure we're minimizing the number of jobs that go unfilled. We do want qualified people in front of the kids, obviously. So that's where we try to target hiring on pretty much all the groups that way. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this topic tonight? Seeing none, I would like to thank you, Tim, for coming out tonight and Executive Officer Blackwell, Superintendent Blackwell, former Associate Director Blackwell. He has many hats.
Nice guy. Keyboard, keyboard player.
A board player. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your report. This is great news. It shows that we're, despite the regulation, that we're doing really well with how we're doing things. So thank you so much for all your hard work. Okay, so we're now up to our board report update. Director Yawali, report 15110 on page 18 of your board package. Director Yawali.
Thank you, Chairperson. This is a report that's brought to the board each September. It is a listing of all the various reports that we anticipate coming to the board and, and dates when they are expected. Some of the, some of the items brought to the board, attention are just part of our natural operation of the board. Some are mandated by the province, such as the board budget process, and some are based on the result of motions by the board in, in previous sessions. I emphasize it is a working document. From time to time, this will be in your package and you will see date changes. And we need to be flexible as time changes and other stresses come forward, that some of these dates may not be carved in stone. For example, For example, um, just to, to edit it today, under September 16th, there's a full-day kindergarten report by Scott Podra-Barrick. Uh, that was postponed to the August, October 7th, not because superintendent Podra-Barrick did not have the report ready, it is ready, but based on the volume of, of information tonight, we decided to pay, to move it to October the 7th. It's not as critical a report as it once was. Uh, this was a very critical report as we moved through the five years, four years?
Five.
Five years of implementation, but we thought the board might be, still want to know a little bit about that, so. Um, have something else?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Oh. Yeah, there is also, as I pointed out for the uh, the manager, there is a bit of an uh, a problem. I don't think we're going to get Yao Bang back in October. So uh, so that's, that should be, uh, that should be superintendent Podra-Barrick.
Is he in charge of Safe Schools?
He is now, no, yeah. No, he had, he was assigned.
So you now know.
He was assigned that responsibility. So Safe Schools and Kindergarten.
That's a great combination. You get them in kindergarten, so that they'll be safe all the way through. Is there any other things you would like to highlight of your report? Uh, questions and comments, trustee Danielli.
And I'm sorry for laughing out loud, it's just I happened to be facing superintendent Podra-Barrick when he first heard his name, and just the look on your face was like, what? Um, and I was going to comment on Yao Bang coming back in October, so thank you for catching that. I'm assuming this French immersion program and accommodation for the uh last Wednesday in September, that, that's set in stone, we are doing that, because I'm not sure I remember seeing that on our upcoming committee list. That's, I just want to verify that. We are doing that on the last Wednesday and I will try to be here.
Sorry, I'm, I, can you help me out with that again?
The first workshop. The French immersion program and accommodation run by associate director Stuart Miller on the fourth Wednesday of September.
I, I think, I think that will be replaced by the, the dates of the consultation that's in, in the report tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Um, park policy, in the list, it says park policy bracket posting and then underneath bell time interim report bracket consultation. So I just wondered what's the, what's the difference between those two things, consultation and posting?
The park policy posting happens when the policy and bylaw committee is satisfied that it can come to the board and be posted for a public consultation. And that may be optimistic in that we first of all have to pass the other policy which is related to community involvement, so that may be an optimistic date. And what was the second one?
Just wondered what's the difference between the two words, posting versus consultation?
Oh, the consultation, the consultation with the bell time interim, the bell time interim report is, is a set consultation process through schools and school councils that, that associate director Miller usually takes on. So he surveys the schools as to their requests for bell time changes and then those, those requests go to our HSTS for feasibility, et cetera, so that's when it starts.
Thank you. Vice Chair Collard.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to make a small request that the spreadsheet include where it says per board motion, the motion number, since these reports are for public viewing and they may wish to look up the report.
Thank you. We will try to get that done in the next version of this, a good idea.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this report tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Director Uwali. Um, we're on to the Ontario Ombudsman, Director Uwali, report 15117 on page 21 of your board package. Director Uwali.
Thanks, Chairperson. This is just a quick information item. I think most trustees are aware that currently the Ontario Ombudsman now has jurisdiction over school boards. I think you've seen in the paper that 50 or 60 concerns have been raised. You mean from trustees? Um, we're, we haven't been contacted and informed that any of the concerns are ours yet. Um, trustees should be aware, and I think I've supplied some information on this, the Ombudsman is a, is an opportunity for citizens to air concerns and seek resolutions when all, all else has failed. So one thing that we've been asked to do, I think in the last week of August or, you know, around the last week of August, we were asked to submit to the Ombudsman our various processes for receiving concerns from citizens. So for example, we, we inform them of our process for um concerns of discipline, and that's a part of our board discipline policy, and various other things that we have in place to allow parents, our park policy is another. Uh, so there are various agencies, there are various functions the board has established to air concerns and to offer opportunities for concerns to be aired. Uh, so we, we offer those to, to the Ombudsman. The one on the back page is an administrative procedure that has been our practice in the board for quite some time, and it speaks of a sequence of events where, where if a parent has a concern about the actions of a teacher, then the process to, to air, to seek resolution is detailed there and including what happens when they have a concern about a board. So that's there. And in general, uh, what the Ombudsman will do is when he, when he or she, I guess it, it may be a he or she, uh, gets the concern, um, they will refer them back to a process that is in existence for resolution. Should that process fail, uh, then investigation could take place. When investigation takes place, the Ombudsman may, may reach a conclusion. That conclusion is not binding on the agency, on the board, or any other agency, uh, but often the, um, the agency is convinced to perhaps change its opinion. There's one error on that, and I apologize. I believe item number one is redundant, it shouldn't be there at all, it should start. Number two should be number one and then read down the page because it's covered in number seven, so we duplicated that, I apologize, we'll, we'll fix that. So that's, um, the Ombudsman is aware of, of whatever, whatever practices we have for receiving concerns and we have not heard back from the Ombudsman in terms of his opinion of our processes.
Thank you. Questions or comments for the director, the Ombudsman? Vice Chair Collard.
Thank you. Um, actually, I was just looking at this and wondering if this ought not to be a bylaw since it deals with trustee handling of concerns and so I'm, I'm going to um, I'm going to have a discussion with the Chair of PBNG and see if we ought to be adding this to our list of bylaws that need to be reviewed.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I, I, it may need to be in bylaws, but it probably also needs to be somehow or other framework policy. Um, the other thing I was going to point out, Director Uwali had already noticed, but number one and seven aren't actually exactly the same, so one could make number seven number one. There's an extra little piece at the end.
He did, he did, he did mention that already.
He, no, he said one and seven were identical, they're not, so they, they, the part about whether the, the trustee may choose to follow up is actually important and I don't want that to get lost in translation. One. So the wording in one should be in seven.
Thank you. So we'll move one to seven and remove seven. Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Uh, thank you. Um, I believe the um Ombudsman speaks directly to handling issues with respect to special education, and I'm wondering whether our um procedures will reflect that specifically.
We'll be informed of our procedures for specialty complaint and frankly, that's well detailed and well documented, the, the various avenues that a parent would have if they disagreed with a placement, if they disagreed with a program, including judicial review through, it's not called judicial review, what is it called? Where's Mark? What's the judicial review we call?
Tribunal?
Tribunal, thank you. Thanks, Mark. So that's well documented. And, and the other issue here is that, you know, in terms of board decisions, all board decisions are subject to judicial review. They, they can, a citizen can go to court, decide and petition court that the board acted inappropriately and, and ask for judicial review, so there is substantial scrutiny already of board, board decisions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on or comments on this topic tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report tonight, Director Uwali, and we will now move on to, um, you're lucky, you're up again. The administrative procedure update, Director Uwali, page, report 15109, page 23 of your board package. Director Uwali, you're up again.
Three before us, I think they're trying to get your money's worth.
We need more than that.
This is again, uh, and this is monthly reported to the board. Uh, we review our administrative procedures where they're simply reviewed with minor revisions, it's noted as it is in report 15109. And when an administrative procedure receives a substantial change, the actual changed administrative procedure is attached to the report. So for this month, there, there are only two listed and neither one of them received a substantial revision.
Okay, comments or questions on the administrative procedure review update? Uh, trustee Harvey Hope. Thank you. Uh, I, when I take this report and I go look on the public website, um, petty cash I could find, but it's not the new one, so I presume if it's been revised and we're not getting a copy of it, um, you would think you'd already updated on the web already. Um, and if not, then revision date being the only thing that gets changed, could you put in this report what the revision date's going to be? Because if it's going to be September 2015, then I could look on the website and say, okay, the one that's there is not the one I need to look at, I got to wait a few days. Because right now I can't confirm or deny that it is or isn't a, a minor change because I can't tell which one is current.
Yeah, thank you for that, for that. We have discussed this whole issue of sequencing at the policy bylaw committee meeting last Wednesday, and I think the manager of the director's office has come up with a good suggestion where all the revision dates will be posted on, on the, in the policy, and it might not be a bad idea for the administrative procedure. So there is a history of originally drafted, revised on, revised on, revised on, so you'll see the history.
But that's not my point. My point is that the document on the website will have those dates, I understand that, but in this case, I can't tell with the report what revision date I'm looking for. So if it's only the revision date that's been changed in this report of the changes, could we say what the revision date's going to be so that you know that you're going to be going to look for one that says it's revised as of a certain date? And the other piece is, this one says donations, and when I look on the list, couldn't find donations, but down at the bottom where it says to be reviewed, there's one called charitable donations. Again, it needs to be the name, that someone's going to go Google it, Skoogle it, whatever, and look for it because this is a heads up to the, the public that there's something changed, they want to go figure out what's changed. I go to the public website, not the internal one, but the, and I should be able to figure out, yeah, okay, nothing's changed, or no, it doesn't affect me, or yes, it's a big change, but specifically for the ones that we don't get the whole document in the report.
Thank you for the suggestions and we will use the date following the board meeting where it's introduced as the date.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers on this topic? Seeing none, we will now move, oh, it's not you. It's David. No. Uh, it's the summer school report, superintendent Bog and superintendent Dyson, report 15113 on page 24 of your board package. Oh, and superintendent Zonavell, his name wasn't on the. Welcome, and we look forward to your report. When you're ready.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and we do have superintendent Zonavell joining us here as well. So we're here to um talk about our summer learning initiatives. You have the report in front of you, and I think you can see from the report that there was lots going on during the, this past summer. We thought it would be helpful for trustees to highlight just three areas in the summer, summer school program and provide a little bit more detail, and so each of us will um comment on one particular area, then we'll be happy to answer questions on any of the summer programs if trustees wish. So my job is around the secondary school credit program and then superintendent, superintendent Dyson will talk about award and superintendent Zonavell will address assistive technology. The secondary summer school program is what people typically think about as summer school, it's our high school program, typically runs a month for full credit courses and two weeks for upgrade courses. We offer a whole host of courses, there are online courses as well and cooperative education, and a couple of focus area courses where we've got specialized groups of students with special education needs, so we've expanded our offerings there as well. Um, just a few highlights for, for folks. Overall, our, our credit program has grown over the years. Um, last year it took a little bit of a dip, but this year it's back up again, but as we look at it year over year, it tends to, to grow. And although our secondary enrollment isn't growing significantly, summer school is growing, and really it's, it's about kids planning their pathways and looking for opportunities to pick up courses in the summer, so they might do a co-op and plan that so that they can do co-op in the summer, but still get programs that they want during the regular day school and get through their requirements in four years. Shism and OYAP co-op courses are an example of that, so kids in shisms who still want to have other electives to take will do their co-op often in, in summer school. Civics and careers is another one that we get lots of kids doing in summer school, so they can plan, particularly with kids in the pre-IB program, they will plan to do their civics and careers in summer school and then um that leaves them a space in grade 10 where they'll pick up a couple of mass in, in day school. Um, our online courses continue to grow both in day school and in summer school. This past summer we grew by about 34%, and if we look at the last couple of years, it's grown by 60%. Really significant growth there, probably attributable to kids having more exposure to online courses, blended opportunities, meaning in a regular face-to-face course, they might do a unit or a topic online, and so they're now much more comfortable learning online and for kids where that's a really good fit for them, we'll see them in our summer programs. Um, of note there is that our success rate in terms of kids completing courses online increased about 5% this past summer, so it's almost on par with face-to-face courses. Uh, again, attributable to kids having a comfort level and knowing what they're signing up for, I think now, but more importantly, I think this is a real testament to our teachers who have, our growth in online and the richness of the courses has improved dramatically over the last number of years. And teachers also in terms of the work they do in terms of feedback for kids, descriptive feedback, um, and communicating with kids and families online, if they haven't logged in for a day or two, um, to get that communication out to say, hey, we have noticed you haven't been online, can we, can we help, is there anything wrong and that sort of thing? So our teachers have done a really great job, which has increased, increased our completion rate for our online courses. So those are just a few highlights of the, of the secondary program. I'm going to turn it over to superintendent Dyson to talk about award and, and then any questions later on about secondary program, I'll be happy to answer as well.
Thank you, superintendent Bog. I'm just going to show you a very small number of slides to give you a taste of what happened with our. with our award program this year. The award program is a summer learning program of about three weeks in length that has the objectives on that slide for you. It stands really for activities in writing and reading. The target audience is children who finish in June, anywhere from senior kindergarten up to grade three. And it's children who otherwise wouldn't have an opportunity to spend some intensive time over the summer, going to camp or doing some of the activities that many of our students always have that opportunity for. So we try to put program in schools where we have larger numbers of younger children who might need some support. This year, we were able to expand the program from two schools to three schools. So we ran it this year at King's Road, which is where we started three years ago, as well as Escarpment View, which we added last year. And then this year, we added Montclair. This program is currently funded by the ministry through the code program, the Council of Ontario Directors of Education. Initially, when we started it, we submitted it through budget and with the support of the board. That's how we funded it. But the last couple of years, we've sort of returned the money to the budget. And we've heard from the ministry that they're so happy with our program, they are anticipating giving us yet another class next summer. So we hope to put one in the area of the board that we don't yet have one, okay? So I just wanted, there's three slides here. I just want you to look at the continuum of slides because what it attempts to do is to give you an example of how this three-week program can help our younger students with their reading so that they sustain their level over the summer. And when they return in September, they don't fall as far behind as children usually do. I think most of you are familiar with our concept of reading levels in the primary grade. So this data is actually from 2012, 2013, but it's a trend and we can see it in the students. Unfortunately, we don't have data for this year because accumulating benchmark data is one of the areas that we're somewhat challenged by with the sanctions. So we're using older data. But throughout the grade one year, which is sort of our flagship year for kids, where we get an idea, children progress and hopefully by June, they reach level 16. And then what tends to happen to children, this is a grade two child who, over the summer, when they return, they tend to drop. So the last slide is the child in grade one, they come back in September, they're in grade two, they're no longer at 16, they tend to be at 12. Most kids can, with good instruction and frequent instruction, can pick that up and bring it back. But a child that doesn't have that support over the summer is quite challenged to bring that back. But we find that children in the award program, and this is data from the last couple of years, what we found is that they in fact return in September a little bit higher than they would have been had they not had the program. And it's just really, it's three weeks worth of support. So the program gives them daily reading, daily writing activities. And we've also included mathematics in the program in the last two summers as well. And we include a focus on FNMI work because that's part of the code funding there as well. So some of the units that they study as well as field trips. So teachers have found that the children who are involved in this program do come back in September in a much better position than other children who hadn't had those opportunities, who are coming from a similar background. We have, once again this year, received some pretty strong support for inner verbal accumulation of data from what parents have told us. So this slide just gives you an example of five comments from five different parents this summer and their perspectives of what the program did for their children. So the comments, and you can read them there, but the comments really range from commenting on the confidence level that they see in their children, having had this focused attention this summer, because there's only between 15 and 20 children in a class. The happiness of children, the attention of children and the confidence they gain in the areas of mathematics, their joy in going to school. And I particularly like the last one, the best part of the program for my son, that's a little boy, for my son was learning math plus the trips, because we do put some field trips into the program. And I think with that, I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Zonaville.
Thank you. So a third area of summer learning that we provide for our students is in the area of assistive technology. So I think you may have heard me talk during budget time about the number of assistive devices that we have out there in the systems supporting students with special needs. And I believe we're over 5,000 at this point. So when those students first receive those devices, there's often quite a bit of learning required to master the device itself, the software, a variety of apps if they're on different types of tablets. There are quite a few things that we really want students to master, to be able to use these tools to great benefit in their learning. So we offer camps during the summertime, also during March break. We have a big uptake with the camps we offer then as well. So you can see, we offered 25 camps across these four locations with about 220 students participating, coming from across those 59 schools. So quite a big uptake there. And we involve some mentors as well. And so the, just a little bit of the commentary that we get from parents, once again, you know, quite happy that their child is gaining confidence with the devices and feeling good about their learning and feeling, you know, well-prepared coming into the new school year. So those opportunities are, have been available and taken advantage of by our students as well. And we welcome any questions on any of the programs we've talked about.
So do we have questions or comments for our speakers? I see there's a couple. I just wanted to make a comment that people traditionally think summertime is a slow time for a school board. But when you look at the numbers, there's 116 K to three students, 220 students who had training for assistive devices, and 5,500 high school secondary credits? That's amazing. That's really amazing. And the increase for the e-learning, I think that's going to be a trend we'll see in our regular classes as well. So I know that we have done a great job developing more programs, but that obviously, I think we need to keep expanding that, so. Trustee Vince.
Through you, Chair Amos. I was very interested in the grade eight transition to high school mathematics program. Now, I noticed that in the report, it mentioned that there were several sites last year, but only this year, it was only at Nelson. And I was wondering a number of things. I was wondering if Nelson is the best location for the program, considering it's not really central? And, and does it, does it, does it really, are the demographics of the students who can actually access the program, like, are they, are we really catching all the kids that might necessarily need it? And was transportation provided for the program at all?
That's a great question. And maybe I can just clarify a little bit. The transition to high school program is, happens typically at a school with their feeder students only. So for example, at Nelson, the kids that feed into Nelson, a number of them would be identified in terms of students at risk or students that may need a little bit of additional work. They'll get them into the school early, they get accustomed to the building, usually has a math or literacy focus or both. And then it's also, they get to meet teachers and some senior mentors, that kind of thing. So it's a bit of an orientation, math, literacy piece. And it's for just the kids at that school. So last year, where we had it at three or four different sites, we had a number of schools that were doing the same kind of program, but with a different group of kids that fed into a different high school. It's, so it's very much the individual high school that sort of initiates that with their feeder schools in terms of kids that might need that additional head start into high Yet, we wondered last year, and it's totally up to the schools whether they participate. We wondered last year whether the sanctions may have had an impact on whether teachers had that interest and, and just the tone we finished the year was a little bit different. So that's, that's kind of likely what we're suspecting. With summer school, there is some transportation provided for elementary. I don't, I don't believe there's any for the high school programs.
Thank you, Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Chair Amos, Superintendent Dyson. I'm particularly interested in the comments that you made earlier, that the government is very pleased with the results that we're gaining through the award program. And I also like the idea that there's possibly the chance for further funding from the government. I would want to know from you, please, what the process would be for determining the next additional site or sites, should the funding arrive? And my second question would be for all of the superintendents as part of this report. Has there ever been a consideration, as I am aware that this does happen in another board, for the interplay of students interested in the teaching career to also be involved in these programs through the summer? Possibly those students are also interested in gaining their 40 hours of volunteer work. But just see it as a wonderful opportunity to sort of match and bring more students into a play with this wonderful positive programming.
Thank you, Trustee Gray. I'm going to do my best to remember those questions, okay? And I'm going to start with the first one. What's our process? The same process we've used up to this point to land on these three schools. We have a school needs index where we use that quite often. And we look at all of our schools, and we do this quite often in school operations, and we look at how needy they are in terms of, what's the socioeconomic profile of parts of the community? Do they have pockets where they've got some children who might need additional support? How many of the children, according to the reading level EQAO data? What are the PMs, the primary benchmarks? How low are the reading scores? Are they at level? What are their EQAO scores like at grade three? So we look at those things as a bit of a basket. And I do that with some of my staff. And we take that to school operations and then all of the family of schools' superintendents take a look at, you know, for my family of schools, if I have a group of schools, A, do I have a school that I would consider should be in this list because it's a very high-need school? And it's a very open process with quite a bit of discussion. We also take a look at who the principal of the school is, not so much who they are, but their ability to support in the early through late spring, to support in the way of encouraging parents of the children that we want to target to enroll them in this program. We had a lot of help this year from Principal Gavin Robertson at Escarpment View and from Principal Kelly Hughes Allen at Montclair. Because unlike King's Road, it was fairly new, it's only in its second year at Escarpment View. So parents weren't as accustomed to it. So it takes a number of phone calls to parents and some positive reinforcement. We discovered that at King's Road, it's that personal communication. So we talk with the principal too, are you willing to make these calls? We know most principals are, but, so it's pretty open. And then we look at the geographic distribution, what's the area? And I believe it's your area that we're, we've got that visual picture of for next year because we know we're lacking in that area, okay? And I think you had another question.
I think your final question was around opportunities for high school students. And so, you'll notice with our camps, we did have nine high school mentors who did help out across the four locations and did get volunteer hours through that. These are students who, you know, through our connections with the high school teachers, we were able to solicit their support and it was a great opportunity for those students as well.
Go ahead.
Just a comment, and that's wonderful with the nine high school mentors. Such a big program and a vast opportunity, it'd be great to think that more students might have the opportunity in the future. And I think it may allow for some great interactions and some great assistance for the people that are running the programs in the summer, if it's possible.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Superintendent Dyson. I believe you answered my question in part already. In addition to the school's index, is there a standardized approach to look at students in other schools and be able to reach them and recommend those who would benefit from this program? And I'm curious also about the uptake of those recommended and those who actually go on to take part in the program? And if we've looked at barriers to participation?
Okay, okay. The first one is, I believe it focuses on schools other than the ones that we mentioned. We have so many spaces to fill. We can go up to 35 students in each of the sites. Sometimes it takes quite a bit of work on the part of the principal. And King's Road is probably our most challenging one to fill. Escarpment View, despite its size, we do a lot of work there too, to fill those spots. But you notice they went up as high as 45. So this year at King's Road and the last two years, the principal had, has had communications with the principals at, if I'm remembering correctly, Glenview and Maplehurst. Okay, so they tend to reach to the next closest schools. And when we do pick one of these schools, usually the school nearest it also tends to have a portion of its population that's in need. One of the factors that is a barrier, we thought initially, was busing. And I know when this first came to the board, there was great discussion and we were going to provide busing. But we have run it for three years now without busing, and we have filled every spot. So we don't think that busing is necessarily an issue. If we pick a school that also has surrounding schools that has needs, so we, for instance, when we go into a more rural area, we probably would look at the neediest school in the most highly populated area. But we have had one or two children who do attend some of those programs who aren't from those schools. And we've had parents actually contact the principal because their principal has sent them information home.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is just, how do the students that take the e-learning credits? How, it seems that the completion rates are very similar. How about the outcomes, i.e. are they getting similar scores to the face-to-face students?
That's a great question. We unfortunately don't have that data for this past summer. We are starting to look at that data from our day school, e-learning courses, and the results are very similar. Maybe we can dig into that in our summer school programs as well. I suspect they are on par now, just because of the richness of the courses. But we can, we can look into that. That's a great idea.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this topic tonight? Trustee Schneider.
I can just speak to personal experience I've taken, but it's during day school, not summer school. And yeah, I got slightly lower, but is kind of the same.
Well, I'd like to thank all three of you for your report tonight. This is really good information. And as I go say, it shows that there's a lot going on in the summer that parents aren't aware of necessarily, except for those who may have their students in programs. And I'd like to thank you for bringing it to the board tonight. So our next item is the capital update. Superintendent Cullen, report 15115 on page 30 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Cullen. And I have a question. So when is the groundbreaking in Odenawi?
Soon as we own the property, no. Thank you, Madam Chair. My last report to the board was just prior to the opening of the school year. So I gave a sort of an immediate state of the union, if you will, at that time. This is our standard report. So it is our quarterly or monthly, depending whether you're looking at the status of projects, the financial part. Tonight's report has both elements to it. It lists all of the capital projects and a couple of the larger renewal ones that we have underway. And it also has all of the portable placements because they were deemed to be of interest at this point in time. I think just to summarize the status of all the reports, all the projects actually, I think we're in very good shape to start the school year. We have since that date had two different rounds of requests from planning to review additional portable accommodation or classroom accommodations for extra teachers due to specific enrollments at schools. So there may be a few more changes to the list as we come forward. We are reviewing a few of those as we speak right now. Be happy to take any questions related. Be happy to take any questions related to any of the capital projects. And Superintendent Bierman is here to talk to any of the financial parts, because as I said, it is the two-part report this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions for Superintendent Cullen tonight? Trustee Oliver.
Thank you Chair. Through you to Superintendent Cullen. The last page of your report lists ministry-funded build capacity. Are these new projects that are going forward?
The build capacity is an accounting element where it tracks any over or unders that we have on projects. For the most part, our build capacity is historical in nature, not new projects.
Okay.
Superintendent Bierman to confirm that.
Thank you. Superintendent Bierman, for the camera is nodding. Do we have any other? Oh, yes we do. Trustee Graves.
Thank you through you Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. Boy, and occupancy has gone well. Just wondering, so from now until, when would be the actual completion date of the school, roughly?
Through the Chair, to Trustee Graves. And for the benefit of the other trustees that haven't actually seen the site, the inside's wonderful, the outside's still missing a few pieces. That particular exterior has extruded metal panels that are custom-fit to each of the slots that they fit into. They were a problem on one other school site. I hope this is the last time they'll ever be a problem, because I think we're going to switch to masonry throughout and get rid of that concept altogether. There's other ways to accent the building. It's due to the nature of the sequence by which they wait to measure, custom-fit them, and then put them in. They don't stop us from occupying, they don't hamper the building. They just don't look very attractive when you see the exposed insulation on that part of the building. So there's a number of those things. There's also the regular deficiency list. So at this point in time, the architect and the contractor teams will go through both of the schools, make up a very lengthy list of all of the deficiencies. I mean, right down to the minute detail of a screw head that's, you know, sticking out too far or an edge that has to be sanded. All of those types of things will be listed on the deficiency. That gets presented to the general contractor, he in turn to the sub-trades. I would say, past experience would tell us that that will go on till at least Christmas time. I have seen them go throughout the entire school year, depending on how involved they are. These two schools are in relatively good shape. So I'm not anticipating too many lengthy ones. But having said that, there are things that we will find as we start to operate the buildings as well, that could be more complicated to do that. The issue is, we're working around occupied hours or after-hours and weekends. So it tends to draw the process out. We do deal with the principles on which are priority items, to hopefully get things done that aren't working. So things like a PA system that doesn't reach all the classrooms in the school can be a bit of an issue. Those types of things, we move up the priority list. Other things that are, as I say, cosmetic or retouches on existing finishes would be done later in the process. Typically what happens, at some point, we become frustrated with the fact that they aren't getting them done, and we'll say, "Thank you very much, goodbye", and then we'll pick up the balance of the account and hopefully finish the project.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much Superintendent Cullen for your report tonight. Okay, so we are now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Vice Chair Cullen.
Thank you. Trustees Pappan, Reynolds, Harvey Hope, and Graves attended SEAC last night. And we began our annual review of the Spec Ed plan. We got through the first three standards. And it's going to be an iterative process whereby nothing is laid in stone. But things that we know we are going to change will be changed as we go through the standards. And we will revisit those standards as needs be throughout the year. And I think it's a very good process because the pace is at a sustainable pace. And we will manage to get through the entire Spec Ed plan and make the changes that are necessary and that reflect what our board is actually doing. So this is good. There were a number of questions about the director's search at the meeting. And they wished to know whether or not we would be asking a question of our director candidates regarding special education. And we did assure them that that is the case. We will be asking a special education question. And we also spoke to them a little bit about the recognition that's coming forward, where we had requested their input and feedback. And they were very pleased to see that that was moving forward. Have I left anything out, Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to committee reports tonight? Seeing none, I have one. I'd just like to remind trustees about the PIC conference, which is coming up on October the 17th. It's, I think it's the seventh or eighth annual. It's always an awesome conference. Please, you shouldn't miss it because there's so many great workshops. And please, get it out to your school communities and encourage them to come. The online registration is already available. So if you're interested in going, you should go to the PIC website and register to go to the conference. All right, so we're now up to the director's report.
Chair, personally, I have nothing further to report tonight.
Okay. I was thinking, nothing further.
She was on three reports.
Oh, right, okay. Communications from the Chair. I received a letter from the Toronto District School Board regarding a motion passed in May. And they would like us to send them a report on the current renewal needs backlog. Because they're compiling a database for each board in the province. And they will make the backlog and the results of the survey available to all boards later this year. So I understand that I should pass this off to Superintendent Cullen because he's the holder of our renewal needs backlog. Thank you Superintendent Cullen. And I think we all know that we need to meet tomorrow at nine o'clock. So don't be late. Well, you have to be there by nine o'clock. Okay, so we're now up to trustee questions and comments. Do we have any trustee questions or comments tonight? Trustee Gavitz.
I was honored to be invited to attend the launch of the Think Outside the Car Challenge event at MM Robinson yesterday. The launch involved the Mayor of Burlington, councilors of Burlington, MPP Eleanor McMahon, MM Robinson staff and student council. And that shows that there is an interest at many levels of government and government partners. Lots of interest on this issue. The challenge is to choose walking, biking, skateboarding, or using public transportation instead of automatically jumping into your car for local and extended trips. So when you make this active and sustainable choice, you need to get someone to take a picture of you doing it, okay? And post it on social media with the hashtag of #ThinkOutsideTheCar. And then, in doing that, also challenge three or more people to do the same. And please note that all trustees, I have challenged you on Twitter. So check your accounts. And I want to see some posting. I have seen a few posted. Leah Reynolds, and who else? It was Trustee Oliver as well.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Saturday, September 26th is going to be a very special day for two of our schools, Burlington Central High and Central Public. They are involved in the Doors Open Burlington Project, which is, for those of you who may not know, it's held across Ontario. It's an opportunity that invites the public into, I want to say, a heritage. They define it as an intriguing and charming heritage sites. So two of our schools apparently have that recognition. Completely free. The event is held from 10:00 to 4:00. I understand they have period costumes. They're going to be selling food at 1920's barbecue prices. They have a very special war memorial featured in Burlington Central High. And they have vintage cars. I believe they have a 1928 fire truck. So please come out and have a look at some of our schools.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much. Today, I was honored to attend the Involvement Fair at TA Blake Lock. So they had displayed many, many internal clubs and activities and many external service providers and partners were there as well. One of the things that people talked to me about during the election time was having a central repository for volunteer opportunities. And I thought, that is a great idea, someone should do that. And today, at the Involvement Fair, I learned that someone is in fact doing that. Volunteer Halton, www.volunteerhalton.ca is a searchable database with volunteer opportunities. You can search based on your grade, your interest, your municipality. So I'm saying this for the benefit of others like me who did not know that this service was out there. So again, www.volunteerhalton.ca. And there are thousands of opportunities in there for students to seek, not only any old opportunity, but one that suits their passions and interests. So that's awesome.
Thank you. Do we have any other trustee comments or questions tonight? Seeing none, I need a motion to rise into private. It's going to be motion to adjourn. Well, no, just do it under motion to adjourn, but it's going into private, so. All those in favor, oh, sorry, moved by Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Pappan. All those in favor. Yeah, well, I know, I said it's going to say motion to adjourn, but it's actually adjourning public into private. That passes unanimously, thank you. We will reconvene in five minutes, thank you.